Okay, are we ready?
Ready.
All right, good evening, everybody. We will go ahead and get the minute. So the meeting started with roll call, please.
Ben Bonpuck.
Here.
Chris Hassig.
Here.
Here.
Colin Laird.
Yeah.
Christina Montemeyer.
Here.
Jess Robison.
Here.
Erica Spurhock.
Here.
Jessica, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of accounts payable, the residential curbside trash and recycling contract extension, which we discussed last meeting, First Amendment to Agreement for Yard Waste Drop-Off Site Collection, which is basically another continuation, liquor license renewal for Tiny Pine Bistro, and a modification of premises for Main Street Dining Patio Deck for La Rasa. Any items to pull or any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Erica. Call in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next item is persons present not on the agenda. So what is on our agenda that will take public comment on is H. Friendly Carbondale has a presentation for us about Highway 133, and we're also going to discuss the contract with Carbondale Aquatics Center. So if you're present, talk about something else. Now is your chance. Anybody here to talk to anybody else? Oh, I guess we have a sign up. Great. Thank you. I forget.
Hi, Nikki Delson from Carbondale. So I just want to give everybody something nice to think about, and it's about the Downtowner. So I want to tell you a heartwarming story. I know that a lot of people have been using it, but I just happened to be at Lift Up the other day picking up something for somebody, and there was a woman there who had just had cataract surgery, who was unable to see, and her husband was getting dialysis, and she had two huge cartons of food, and she didn't even know about, she had heard about it, but didn't really understand it. So we gave her a card, which she could not see. She couldn't see the phone number, and she couldn't scan it, and truly didn't understand when I was explaining it to her. But within five minutes from the time I called, that van came. The driver wasn't quite sure where Lift Up was, so he's at the entrance to, but they're learning, you know, as they get to know the place. So he came to Lift Up, he helped her in, he helped her with both cartons that she had, and said, just reassured her and said, don't worry, I will help you take the cartons into your house. And it was just like, she lived only four blocks away, and she, the only thing that she could think of to do to get back was to call her son to come from work to pick her up to take those, to go those four blocks. So, thank you.
Sue Zisslis?
Hi, Sue Zisslis, Carbondale. Also, a little anecdote about Downtowner. I'm here to tell you a little bit of fact about a friend of mine that you probably all know, Sandy, who lives in Crystal Meadows, and she wanted you all to know that Downtowner is changing her life in a positive way. There are people who live in Crystal Meadows and elsewhere in town that have been driving that really probably shouldn't be driving. And so the presence of the Downtowner is going to make our streets safer, and make, and may also, and also helping people feel more independent, more able to participate in things that they have the energy and the ability and the desire to participate in, they've not been able to because it's at night, or they can't beg, steal, or borrow a ride from somebody else. And it has already made a very positive difference for several folks that I personally know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else signed up?
I'm not signed up. Can I still go up?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Thanks. Hi, Patty Lecht. I'm, I'm sure there's a presentation for 133 tonight, but I wasn't paying attention, and so that makes me not relevant to that particular conversation, though I'm, I have a little thing that I'll hand around. Just a reminder, while requesting that the speed limit be brought back to 35 at the south end of 133, where there is a number of pedestrians, cyclists, rollerbladers, wildlife, et cetera, on that portion. And I realized, because it is a topic at hand in general, I thought, oh, this is the moment to come in and ask, please, if by chance it's possible, to reduce that speed limit from 55 to 35, to the Prince Creek Turnoff, as there's such pedestrian presence there. And it's near the high school as well, near the second entrance. And so I'll just hand this out, and, and thank you for hearing my request.
Anybody else here to speak about something not on the agenda? Go ahead, state your.
May I say something?
Yep, and it looks like Richard wants to also. Just state your name for the record, please.
I see a few friendly faces. Once upon a time, when I stood before you.
Can you tell us your name, please?
Diane Johnson.
Diane.
I had the privilege, the honor, and the pleasure of being one of the founding members of Senior Matters. And coming before you, the years ago, trustees.
Hello, John. How are you?
And the wonderful people that I live with in Crystal Meadows. That's my home now, and Carbondale is where my heart is. And thank you for responding to important needs in our community, our safety, our sustainability, and taking care of the seniors in our community, because I still wobble, and I'm wobbling more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Volterro, and I live in downtown Carbondale. I've been going to Denver to visit my new granddaughter periodically here, and I'm so thankful for the traffic in Carbondale on 133. It hones my alertness and driving skills to get along in Denver and have myself feel safer. I utilize the middle lane quite a bit to make left turns, and you just have to be brave. You know, throw caution to the wind and just be brave. Otherwise, you're going to sit there quite a while. Someone behind you is going to get upset, and it's just uncomfortable. So I look for my opening, and I take it.
Anybody else here to comment on something not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Moving on then to trustee comments. Trustees have any comments? Meetings you've attended or other updates since our last meeting? Go, Erica.
I got the distinct pleasure of filling in for the mayor for an event last week celebrating the Thompson Divide. So I got to speak on stage with local rancher Bill Fails, Picking County Commissioner Greg Postman, Colorado Department of Natural Resources Director Dan Gibbs, the new Regional, Region Two Forester Troy, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Heificker, along with Senator Michael Bennett and Department of Interior Secretary Deb Holland. It was, I also got to go hiking with them on the Lorax Trail on Monday, and it was truly awesome. So, made my year, in fact. So I'm so glad you wrote it down. But it was just, you know, I represented us, I represented our prior councils that have had, that have supported the Thompson Divide, the work to protect Thompson Divide. And really, most of my words, I was just thanking all of the local leaders and Thompson Divide Coalition and Wilderness Workshop for all of their hard work. But it was a really, you know, it just, it was also a good reminder, you know, to stay, stay strong and keep persevering on the issues that are really important to us, and to celebrate when we do get wins. And I think sometimes on our board, we have really good successes on things, and then we just move along to the next thing. So, not saying we have to have a party every time, but just acknowledging all the hard work that other people put into, you know, protecting the beauty around our town is really important. So, and then my only, my only other comment is that I went to our Fourth of July celebration, which is our adorable little parade, and everybody was out, and just thanks to town staff for blocking the streets and helping make that happen. And our local fire district even turned the hose on in Carbondale this year, which usually they only do that in Redstone. So, that was fun. But, that's all.
Thanks, Erica, and thanks for representing us at that event. I'm sorry I was unable to be there, but it sounds like it was really good. We were well represented, so thank you. Any other trustee comments?
I have.
Christina?
I have a couple of comments. I thank you first and foremost, everybody who did a public comment. I also took the Downtowner this week from my house to my other job. So that was, that was great. And then I, I enjoyed, it was air conditioned when it's like 90 degrees outside, so it was nice. So I encourage everybody, and I'm passing out flyers, so people can take advantage of the Downtowner. Second, there's so many events going on in the summer, and I just wanted to go over to that I'll be attending. There is a nonprofit called Colorado Water Trust, and what they do is they do work to restore water in our rivers and streams in the Roaring Fork Valley, and they are going to be doing an open session and learn about, more about what they do to help our rivers and streams locally. And it'll be tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:30 at Al Dorado Bar and Lounge here in Carbondale. And then another fun and exciting one for my family, because I think art and history are so important, and especially small towns, is the Carbondale Library on Monday, July 22nd, at 6:00 PM. They're going to have a unique and amazing performance from a rock and roll artist, and he's going to go over the US through decades, and it's going to be in rock and roll. So I'm looking forward to that event. And then lastly, we, I did do First Friday as well with the Fourth of July. So thank you again. It's always fun to have those safe celebrations and the hard work that the town does for those events. So, that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Christina. Anybody else?
I don't know, I know, I don't know if people saw the newspaper today, but the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition was before the City Council for Aspen to ask for money for that program. They're going to be considering it over the next few weeks, upwards of $400,000, and we're hoping to unveil the program in August. So, stay tuned.
Chris, anything?
Just mention that we did have a, we're gonna, we're gonna have a pretty big Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission meeting with the consultant in person in the first week of August. And so that's hopefully going to be a big leap forward to, there's going to be a second draft coming out before that. Obviously, there's going to be hopefully some incorporation of the age-friendly information into that. And so that's just a heads up, that that's going to be a big meeting if people want to attend that and make their voices heard with the consultant in the room. So.
Thanks, Chris. Jess, anything?
I attended the Tourism Council meeting this week, or last week, and I don't know what week it is. And they are focused on revamping their website and doing more, less marketing about the area and more about tourism sustainability. They have a consultant working on some things with them for that. They got money from the state for. So, that was interesting to hear about. And then Garfield Clean Energy has their board meeting this month, this week. So I will be going to that on Friday.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Ross, anything from across the world there?
Sure. Lots, lots of great traffic calming measures here that we could, we could certainly talk about. But I just wanted to relay, I think, sort of from the, from the, maybe, maybe the lower end of the municipal totem, totem pole, or the, the community totem pole, an interaction with, with Jill, our meter technician, who stopped by and was, was talking about the various, or she wanted, she needed to check something off the list for, for my, my house. But we ended up chatting for 15 or 20 minutes just about the, the new options for software. And it was just her enthusiasm about, about that, the savings to be made, water savings to be made, and the, the ability of amazing things that we can do, some, some new techniques and new technologies there, was, was, was super fun and engaging. And if, and if all of our town employees could be, could be that enthusiastic, we'd, we'd be in a great spot. And I think, and I think to a larger extent, we are. But just, just wanted to do a little shout out to Jill. And then also, it was sort of news to me as, as a relatively new trustee, when I ran into something that I thought at first was the Downtowner, but was in fact our shuttle, that I did not understand or wasn't aware, is running folks from parachute, I believe, to town on a daily basis. And so I ran into the, I guess, the mechanic there filling up the co-op, and we chatted a little bit about that. And so just when folks are talking about, when we, when we, when we talk about affordable housing and, and those needs, I think, when we, when we realize we've got a bus running to, to the western part of our, of our county on a frequent basis to get our employees here, I think it just kind of brings to light how important it is that we try to settle more of them closer to their occupation.
Hey, thanks, Ross. I don't have any big updates. Just a reminder to trustees that we're planning for a retreat on Tuesday, the 6th of August. So that's the first Tuesday of the month. So you might not have it blocked out on your calendar. Please make sure that you do, or let Lauren or me know. Great. And she's going to send an invite, just so that we, we want to make sure everybody's available. So if anybody's plans have changed since we first started looking for dates, please tell us ASAP. And that's from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. So it'll be in afternoon rather than, rather than later evening. And we're going to start doing some planning for that. That is all I had. So I think moving on next is attorneys.
Forgot one thing. I just got kudos from one of the neighbors of the rodeo, that the second rodeo seemed to go off way better, and progress is being made there. So.
Okay. Attorney's comments. Susan, anything for us today? Okay, thanks for being here. Managers' comments?
Thank you. I just have a couple of brief items. I'll start with the retreat, because we're sort of on that subject. As of this afternoon, we have secured the public room at the library for the retreat location, and I will be sending out a calendar invite so that you can all have it on your calendar tomorrow. I'm still working on moderator, but I'll keep you posted on that. Also, Erica, you are always completely timely with your notices. I saw your email this afternoon about the website, and it was already on my manager's report to talk about. We have been updating our website through Revise as part of our renewal of our contract. This has been going on for a couple of months, and it's been creating a parallel website to our current website. Those will be switched on Monday, July 15th, and the new website will be live. And Ross, I sent you a reminder email that we need your picture. So, thanks for coming on from Scotland. What time is it there?
I think 1:01 something. That's all right. It's all, it's all, it's all, it's all a big blur. It's all a big.
So, so anyway, so you'll see all of those things being updated, anything that's left over from the old one with old trustees' names on it, or old pictures, or what have you. And you should have all gotten a reminder from Anna that if you want to change your picture, or change any information that is on our current website, if you let her know by the end of the week, if you forgot about it, or what have you, we can still get it up there to have it be active on Monday. And then lastly, a little bit of sad news for us is that our Finance Director, Kristi, will be leaving us the first week, the end of the first week in August, to take the Chief Financial Officer's job at the School District. So we're back to recruitment mode for that. But we, we have posted it, I think we posted it on Friday, in a number of places. We do already have one very qualified applicant that hopefully we will be interviewing in the next few days, and hopefully we will not have any big gaps. That's all I have.
Thank you. Action items, then. So, one pretty quick one, and then we'll, actually two pretty quick ones, and then we'll hear from H. Friendly Carbondale, and then talk about the pool. So first, pretty quick one is public easement acceptance for Carbondale Storage. Hi, Kevin, I didn't see you back there.
I, I won't, I'll reserve comment. But in an effort to listen to Ross, some easements were recorded in 2021, and they were wrong, and this fixes it. That's as enthusiastic as I can get.
That was good. I like that.
You're trying to be like Jill?
Yes. I don't have that much energy. Really, that's the nuts and bolts of it. The prior owner of the property recorded some easements based on planned locations versus as-built locations. Some of the things required field adjustment, and so this document matches up to get the easements where they need to be over the as-constructed things. And what you will be doing, if you approve this, is vacating those previously recorded easements and accepting the new ones.
Okay. Okay, and that one motion will take care of both of that, to authorize and execute the attached general warranty deed. That takes care of vacating.
Yes, because the vacation language is included in the deed.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions from the board? It seems pretty straightforward. It's, I would just say that, you know, nobody gets really excited about storage unit projects, but they have to exist somewhere. And I think that this one turned out about as not, I was thinking if there was like storage unit competitions out there for design, I think that this one would win. It's just really impressive what's happened there, and the public infrastructure that's come along with it, the art, the contributions to our community, the lighting, landscaping, and even the architecture of the building itself. I think it's come out really better than I had expected. So with that, I think we'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the attached general warranty deed.
I second.
Motion by Erica, second by Christina. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next one is a special event liquor license and facility use agreement for the Cowboy Up event. Anybody here to talk about that? Yeah, great.
Long way around.
That's all right.
You want me here or here?
Either place. And you can just reintroduce yourself to us, please, for the record. I know you've been here before, and tell us a little bit about the event, and then we'll see if we have any questions.
Thanks for having me tonight. My name's Eric Rudd. I'm with the Cowboy Up Board and representing our applicant this year, which is Carbondale Education Foundation.
Great. Any changes to the event, or pretty much same as usual?
Pretty much the same. Same tents, same, same layout. Seems to work. Same, we have the mechanical bull again this year, which seemed to be a lot of fun for the kids last year.
Okay.
And some of the adults.
And it's an opportunity to kind of promote the event as well. If somebody wants tickets, how do they go about finding tickets?
We do, we do table sponsors, which were pretty close to sold out right now for 10 top tables. And then everything else is just at the door.
Okay.
To get tickets. The, the tables are all catered by Slow Groovin', and then we'll have Slow Groovin's food truck there also for Watkins.
Cool. All right. Any questions from the board about this event?
What's the date?
August 23rd, 6 to 10.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
I'd move to approve the facilities use agreement and special, what is it, special use?
Special event liquor license.
License for Cowboy Up.
I second.
Chris, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks for your time and your support.
Thank you. Good luck with the event. Okay, so this is one of our larger topics, then. We're going to get into H. Friendly Carbondale's presentation on the Highway 133 report. And we have a few different things in our packet, and I think that they have a presentation, so let's dive in.
I forgot something in my manager's report, and Christina just reminded me about it. Our guest Wi-Fi has been changed to a town meeting Wi-Fi, and the password has changed. So if any of you are struggling to connect, the.
It's up there.
Yeah, the new password is up there on the wall. So, and we'll just put it in it.
Thanks.
It's just not working.
Tech support.
It was the lid. It disconnected me, so I have to get back on.
And then it's this one, right? Connect to C D.
Nikki, you maybe, you know, want to start talking about thanking some people and stuff, and it's good. I don't know who to thank.
We're patient. We can wait.
You just had to touch it for me.
Because you did email us.
Okay, I'll put Crawford's on. Good. Okay, so now we have to go to share screen. Now we want to share this.
Share sound.
Share sound. Okay. Should be it, right? Yeah, let me see. Right, that's, okay. All right.
Go ahead and hit share.
All right, see.
So it's on your screen.
Okay, there you go. Got it working.
Well, that is the first one, isn't it? That's your first line? This is not working, the word is?
Yes, it is. Probably won't need this, but just in case.
All right. Thanks for getting that set up. And we have about 45 minutes for this discussion.
Right. And we will try and get this all done in 30 minutes, so that there's time for discussion of questions.
Yeah, I mean, 45 minutes for the whole agenda. So.
Right. So.
And we've read the packet, so that always helps.
So, this has taken us a year and a half to get here. So thank you very much for your patience and waiting for us. We're here with a purpose. The purpose is really to be a conduit between the people of Carbondale and the trustees. And what we're going to do tonight is we're going to share with you what our listening has been, what we've heard from the people of Carbondale. We're going to share with you what their stories are, what the data tells us, what we did, why we did it, and how we did it, so you could understand everything that's in your packet. We are not going to go over everything that's in your packet. We'll use, you know, just snippets of it to explain the greater process of getting this packet all together. So the final thing that we are going to do at the end is ask the trustees to address what we see as a very urgent need in the town of Carbondale. But before we start, we want to share just a short video. And this comes from Strong Towns America, and it's what is a strode, which is what 133 is. So. Is the sound coming from?
In this country, we're having a huge debate over transportation spending. How do we find more money to continue to do the things that we currently do? We actually need to be having a conversation about how to do things differently. How to take more investment, get better use of it. If you're traveling more than 20 miles an hour and less than 50 miles an hour, you are on a strode. A strode tries to do two things at once and does neither of them well. It tries to be both street and road. What's the difference? A road, we can think of as a replacement of the railroad, which of course is a road on rails. And in a railroad, you would get on at one spot, and you would get off at another. And there's a high-speed connection between the two. We're trying to move people from one productive place to another productive place. When we build roadways to serve as high-speed connections, and we don't encumber them with accesses and turnoffs and interchanges, what we see is that we can make very cost-effective investments and move a lot of people very, very quickly. What is a street, then? A street is, and always has been, a platform for building wealth. It's a platform for creating value within a place. It's a platform for creating value within a place. As an engineer, we design streets by the foot. And what we're looking for from a financial standpoint is how much return do we get per foot that we put in? In a really good street environment, what we see is that the design is actually narrower streets, wider sidewalks. It's designed for people. It's designed for people to freely flow back and forth. You're going to have sidewalks, uh, you're going to have good spacing, you're going to have slow traffic, you're going to have on-street parking, you're going to have the ability of people to safely move from place to place in that environment. The problem comes when we try to do both, when we try to both move traffic quickly and create wealth. In those environments, we wind up with a strode. When you get into a strode environment, you get these signs that are out of scale. When you're driving along, they're actually not big enough to work for you, but when you're walking along, they're way too big, they're way out of scale. Strods are incredibly expensive to build, extra lanes, extra wide lanes, and attempt to essentially build highway-style roadways in places where we don't expect highway-style speeds. We put in traffic signals, we put in stop signs, we put in things that slow you down. Beyond that, they're not safe. So even though we've invested a lot of money to move cars quickly, nobody moves very quickly. What we need to do is forget about trying to create a whole bunch more money to continue building what we've already shown doesn't work. We have to actually have a dialogue about how we take our existing strods and convert them to either wealth-creating streets or high-performance roadways. Roadways that connect our places, places that build wealth and value. That's a Strong Towns approach.
So Highway One Thirty-three is essentially our strode. It divides our town in half from east to west, and it has really no safe way or very few safe ways to get across. In transportation lingo, that the what the way that that's described is it's the futon of the transportation. It tries, a futon tries to be a couch, it tries to be a bed, it's not very good at either one. And that's how the language of a strode came about. So the issue with the strode for us is that for those of us who are part of the fabric of this community, who walk, who bike, who roll, who also drive cars when we have to, it's very, very difficult to feel connected. The town is not woven together, and that's especially true for the most vulnerable users. And vulnerable users are really defined as those of us who are not inside this metal box with wheels. So we're more likely to get hurt along the way. So tonight, we're going to do our best to represent the voices of the community, what people have said to us and what we have learned along the way. And usually, I mean, it's kind of busy work to make all of the thank yous to everybody who helped us, but we're all volunteers. And without the help of many people, we could not have done this work. So I want to say special thanks to the staff of Carbondale, whose doors were, I was going to say always open, but I think sometimes we thought Kevin and Jared had this secret little way of getting in touch with each other to let them know that we were coming. And so they would both get on the telephone, but mostly the doors were open to us. And they mentored us um with almost everything that we asked. So and Kay McDonald is the best researcher to get dig deep into the weeds and find almost any document that we knew had been written, but we couldn't find ourselves. We want to thank um Bill Crawford and Andy Staley, who are traffic engineers with CDOT, who Sue Zissler later will tell you about how they helped us. Matt Farrar from Western Consulting, who really helped us divide, find the software and helped us understand how to do the data collection, the Bike, Ped and Trails Commission, who worked with us along the way. And a special thanks to two national, well, actually three national organizations, ARP um and the National Organization of America Walks um gave to Carbondale two fellowships to the America Walks College. And so two of us spent six months enmeshed in how to make a town walkable. And without that, I don't even think that we would have even ventured on this path. So it's been a lot of hard work. And to Smart Growth America, who really gave us some free consultation. So the purpose of the study that we're going to present is really to be a conduit for the community members, really to petition our town to take some assertive action. And we'll talk about what that specific action is to make the town more safe for people of all ages and all abilities to navigate around the town. And so I'm going to move now to let Ron talk with you about how we did the data collection and what the numbers actually tell us.
Can you hand me that clicker thing?
Thank you. Okay, so we collected data for about four months last summer. We did it in three ways. Um, we went to five live events. We had a Spanish speaker at our table at each event so that we could communicate with Spanish speakers. We invited people to put free-form comments on posted notes, just tell us whatever they wanted to tell us about One Thirty-three. We had a big map that um of of One Thirty-three and people could put numbered little sticky dots on that map and then fill out an index card with a number that corresponded to the sticky dot to show us the intersections that concerned them on the map and then the comments of about what concerned them on the sticky dot. And we had a seventeen-item bilingual questionnaire that was available um both online and on paper. And I I want to stress that is it whenever you do a survey in this town, it's important to have it on paper, too. You'll only get a part of the population when you do it online. Uh, we distributed that questionnaire to older adult living facilities, to the senior lunch site, to Stepping Stones, to Garcia's and and several other restaurants. We had a uh Spanish-speaking community organizer helping us, who went into those restaurants and just grabbed people and said, fill this out, it's important. And we had the the paper questionnaires at five different locations around town where people could pick up the questionnaires and where they could also drop them off once they were completed. And then we just typed the paper responses in. We received a total of six hundred and twenty-six responses from the people of Carbondale. Some of them responded in more than one way, but I think it's it's more than reasonable to assume that we have five hundred discreet responders to this survey. And that um they are English speakers and Spanish speakers. There were people as young as twelve and people um as old as in their eighties. That would be me. And um altogether, they gave us over four thousand data points to work with. So that's a big chunk of information. And we spent about six months trying to make sense of that. And um we are we are comfortable that when you've got that big a a response rate in a town this small, we are representing the people of Carbondale. This isn't just a few people who had an axe to grind. Okay. In addition to collecting data from the people, we also reviewed a whole bunch of existing documents. You know, stuff like from Strong Towns and previous studies that the town itself had commissioned. And now the results to that are in. Here we go. So this is the posted notes. Uh, this is a word cloud and it just you you just take everything from the posted notes, you type it into a computer program, and then the more often a particular term comes up, the the more often it got get, the bigger it gets on the word cloud. So it's just a nice graphic to see what people had to say on those posted notes. And you could see the biggest thing they said was people are going too fast on that street, you know, it's not good. They're going too fast. Slow it down. Um, and in terms of where they were most concerned, you can see that City Market, Wells Fargo, Dolores Way. And that's that's the posted notes and that's really all that we have to say about the posted notes. Okay, so we ask people, this is on the questionnaire. We ask them specifically, how do you mostly get around Carbondale? And if you had a a perfect world, how would you like to get around Carbondale? And the the trend that we saw was that um people would like to drive less. On the whole, they would like to drive about two-thirds as much as they do. Now, we broke that down by age groups and that's in in your packet, I think. And so how they want to do things differently will depend to some degree on the age group. Younger people want to be on their bikes more, older people want to walk more, uh, maybe use public transportation more. But universally, every age group from teenagers through eighties said, we want to be out of our cars more than we are. Okay, so why don't we drive less? We want to drive less, why don't we? The answer to that question is really simple. Fear. People are afraid. You can see that about, I've said, I'm lost in my notes. I'm just going to talk extemporaneously from the slides. You can see that about half the people what what's it saying? Yeah, um, half the people, when they're half, and these are the adults and teenagers who answered the question. Walking along One Thirty-three, only half the people feel safe. The other half don't feel safe. Um, that part that says neutral is an artifact of the fact that we weren't very good at designing questionnaires. But it's it breaks down about roughly half and half that feel safe, don't feel safe. When it comes to crossing One Thirty-three, and this is people speaking for themselves, you have a much bigger fear factor. About two and a half to one, people say, we don't feel safe crossing One Thirty-three. When we asked about their children, the results are really spectacular in kind of a sad way. You can see how worried people are to have their children even walk along One Thirty-three. And crossing One Thirty-three, it's like nobody wants to let their kids cross One Thirty-three. And that's that's kind of sad, really. We talk in in our comprehensive plans going back to twenty thirteen, we talk about small-town character, smart growth. The place where, you know, I can't let my child visit their friend because they're, I'm afraid to let them cross a a street. That isn't small-town character. Nikki, can you move the slide? It stopped working. Oh, there there was.
Nope.
Okay, well, we're way ahead now. It's just. We had that one, okay. All right, so um what is it that people are afraid of? Um, again, where there there were three questions, narrative questions on the questionnaire, where they could tell us what what they're afraid of. And there's the word clouds for it, and it doesn't look any different really than the word cloud that you saw. They're afraid of crossing the street, that City Market is the main place where they're afraid of crossing the street. Okay, people are afraid. Should they be? I don't know. Um, sixteen percent said that they had been in or personally witnessed an accident. And about half the people said that they had personally witnessed or been in a near accident. We don't really have an objective frame of reference, to be honest, to to tell you whether that's a high number. But we we, it seems high to us, and we do know that it's high enough for people to tell us that they're not getting out of their cars, because once they take down that wall of steel around them, they don't feel safe. But there is, you know, there is good news in this, and and the good news is that that widespread desire to drive less, okay? The town council, the town leaders, everybody wants people to drive less. And the public is with us on that. They want to drive less. And they're asking us to make them feel safe doing that. And when we looked at, we had a question on what are the obstacles that keep you from getting out of your car? Eighty-two percent of those obstacles are regulatory or infrastructure. They can be changed. We're not locked into things staying the way they are. I think that's it, right, Nikki? You're?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, I'll have to be over here. I'm going to talk about how we gather data about intersection by intersection and um how the report is organized. So there were eight intersections that we looked at. Each one of them is in your packet separately. We did, we asked the same exact questions for each intersection. The two that are highlighted, both City Market and the Montessori School area, are the ones that we addressed specifically, the letting you know about tonight. We're not going to, I'm going to only use one to describe how we created the um document. But both of them rise in the level of um community safety, where we're most worried about people. Um, and people are telling us that they're most afraid. So um, these are the eight intersections. That's the map. And I'm going to talk about uh the City Market interest uh intersection. And we chose this one because even though it came up the number with third now, the the, when I talk about the intersections, we're talking about the data that we got from the map and the sticky dots that people put on it and all of the comments that um people gave us. So even though City Market, we're calling it an intersection, but it's a, it's an unsignalized, people-made intersection. It's where people jaywalk and um or jayroll. They walk, they roll, they they go fast, they get stuck in the middle um of traffic trying to get to the other side. So even though City Market came up number three on all the sticky dots, when we combined it with all the data from the survey, the City Market intersection rose to the highest level uh in all the data that we got. So um, this is how we analyzed and came up with the recommendations for each intersection. So we used, we had a hundred and four comments from the from the um index cards, which we fed into AI. And um so we learned how to use that and ask sort of compound questions. It took us a couple of really long tries to try and figure out how, what's the right, what's the appropriate question to ask AI to get the data that we need that we then could verify, but with human verification. So the four questions, compound questions that we asked is, here's all the safety thing, here's, here's what everybody said. What are the safety themes? Tell us the themes that people are telling us about why this is a dangerous inters- intersection. What are the infrastructure changes that can be made to address these themes? What is the, how would you prioritize these infrastructure changes? And what is the rationalization for each infrastructure change? And so intersection by intersection in our report, you could pull out each intersection separately and know that that's how we did it. So that was the first thing that we did. Then with those recommendations in hand, at different times of day, we went to each intersection to take a look at the feasibility of the recommendations, because AI doesn't walk or get around town. Everything is very unique in town. Well, um, we looked at the recommendations based on the specific layout and the traffic flow at that at different times of day. And then the third thing that we did, which Sue will talk with you about after I finish this piece, is we walked the length of One Thirty-three with um Bill Crawford from CDOT and people who have mobility challenges to see what we didn't see, which was very eye-opening because we thought we were very observant. So you don't know what you don't know. So you don't know what you don't know. And then finally, we researched all of the recommendations and possible solutions that had been made in previous studies that had been done for the town of Carbondale. This one. So the first thing that we did in each report is give you just a taste of some of the anecdotes that people told us. So I witnessed a person running across 133 from east side to the west side to get to City Market entrance, and he was nearly hit by a car. I walked to the shop from my home on Lincoln Avenue but have difficulty crossing at City Market. I am partially disabled and traveling in extra distance is difficult. So I had to hire somebody to do my shopping for me. And on each intersection, we gave you some, only a few of the anecdotes, but if you want all of them, there are hundreds of them. Ron has the data, you could go in, you could dive deeper. We're not going to go into that today. So let me tell you about City Market. These are a list of the major themes that came up through AI. You could read them, so I'm not going to go over them. But the distance between the designated crosswalk is seven tenths of a mile. And people said that walking or cycling is inconvenient, so they, including wheelchair users, they jaywalk across 133. And I just happened to be driving by and didn't get, I was walking, not in my car, and managed to get a picture. But it's not infrequent that it happens, that I see people just walking or running. And people send us more information about it. So what the community is asking is for a more convenient access to the essential services. It's the only shopping center, it's the only place to go food shopping. And they said that without that, that's why they use their cars. So these are the priorities that we think is most important for you all to know, is for all users to have a safe and legal way to cross 133 directly at City Market. Now, I know that in, you have the most recent version of the report in a previous report. Chris, I'm really addressing what you said, is that we don't derail the industry way. And I think that was really an error when we put in, like, we need a roundabout here. No, what we need is a safe crossing. And speaking to traffic engineers, we could really do both. So we're not, the new report no longer says we're in favor of a roundabout at Nuslanic rather than at Industry. In order to build such a safe crossing, we need traffic calming measures on both sides of the crosswalk, and we need to improve signage and road markings. And I know that that sounds like a big ask, but we do have Bill Crawford online, and he's going to tell us how they did it in Gunnison. So I don't know now whether or not, how to get him to be the speaker, just go to the next slide. And Bill?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
If you could speak up a little bit more, Bill, we can hear you just barely.
Okay, sorry, I'm not sure if I.
That's better.
My name's Bill Crawford, I'm with the Colorado Department of Transportation and Traffic Operations, which covers Carbondale. I met with the group Age Friendly about two months ago to take a walk through the Carbondale area on 133, looking at the crossing opportunities there and some places where they want to do some crossing. And then we also had a virtual, yeah, virtual discussion a couple of weeks ago. And I showed them this slide here, this is in Carbondale on Highway 130, or on Highway 50, just to the east of town, just past the turnoff to on 135. The college is on the right-hand side, and there's a park on the left-hand side. You can see that there are four lanes of traffic and a two-way left turn lane in the center, plus a lane of, a parking lane on the outsides there. So the reason I brought this one up is because it has a lot of features that are needed to make a safe crosswalk. One of the things I would also do with this would be to have the thermoplastic, white thermoplastic crosswalk bars instead of the red crosswalk that they have there. But otherwise, it would make it show up a little bit better. One of the things they did is, you can see on the sides of the street there, they bolded out the location where a pedestrian or someone in a wheelchair would start their crossing instead of at the sidewalk. They bolded that out in that area, makes for a shorter crossing. They put in the median island there. They have the signage, they have the RFPs. If you were to actually move back a little bit, you would also see that they have yield bars and signage for those yield bars. And the idea behind that is to have the traffic yield to a pedestrian that's crossing that crosswalk about anywhere from 20 to 50 feet back so that if another car is coming up alongside it, they will see the person in the crosswalk and know to yield there also. And also that allows the pedestrian to see that the car coming also. So that's one, that's a nice safety feature. So there's lots of things they can do, and this picture shows most of those. There's also lighting, it's on the upstream side of the traffic so that it would highlight the pedestrian walking across there. Another thing that you don't see in this right now, but they have a pedestrian warning ahead sign, probably about 250 feet back behind us there. And so the speed limit on this road is also 35 miles an hour. But this has made this into a fairly safe crossing for people. There's lots of people coming from the college or the town, going to the park. And so this is why I picked this as an example. It just shows a lot of good ways of making for a safe crossing. And I think this is, this is what you want to do on Highway 133. To make, make it not just appear safe, but to actually be safe for people to cross and have their children across and bicycles and whatever to cross where they need to get to. And one of the keys to this is location. This is a good location, this is where people were crossing anyway. And so that's what you're looking for. You want a spot where people will be drawn to and will want to go, and that's where you want to put that crossing. If you were to move this up, say, 200 foot down the road, it wouldn't be used as much as it is here. Because people don't want to go out of their way, so you want to put it as close to where people are actually going as you can, you can make it. So I think that's what I was called upon to talk about here, with some of the safety features of this particular crossing. And how this could apply also to Highway 133.
Great, thank you, Bill.
Okay, Dan, I'm going to, I'm going to turn this over to Sue, who's going to talk about vulnerable users. You can do it from over there?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Bill, and we will be doing, asking questions to Bill afterwards. I'm sure there are a few. So anyhow, in case you missed it, let me reshare Age Friendly Carbondale's mantra, which is "All ages, all abilities, all included." So you can imagine that we were amazed when we reviewed all of the previous government contracted reports about our stretch of 133. We discovered that none, not one, made any reference to safe accessibility for people with disabilities, surely the most vulnerable users of our highways. This even though the CDC says that at any time approximately 13% of all Americans have either permanent or temporary disabilities in the area of mobility. So there are many reasons why someone might be permanently or temporarily be slower when negotiating our streets and sidewalks. And by the way, today, approximately 15% of our population could be categorized as older adults. And in a short 10 years' time, that percentage is expected to double. So you may think there are very few Carbondale residents with such mobility challenges because people with noticeable disabilities are often not seen out and about in this community. And herein lies a paradox. All too often, it is not a person's actual disability that sabotages their optimal independence, it's the physical barriers around the community that limit them. These folks are not often out there because our inadequate infrastructure presents barriers that are too frustrating or downright dangerous. Case in point, crossing Highway 133 is unreasonably challenging for even able-bodied pedestrians. Among our interviews of users of 133, AFC did include two of several Carbondale residents who depend on wheelchairs for mobility. Thank you, Adam. And one uses a power chair, and the other uses a manual chair. And after our walkabout, we did interview several other people, both with wheelchairs, crutches, and walkers. And we contacted CDOT to give them a little heads up about a potential ADA accessibility issues on 133. And Bill Crawford, our Region 3 Traffic Safety Operations Engineer, came out to bear witness to our concerns. And there we are. Three AFC members, AFC members, two of our local wheelchair users, Bill Crawford from CDOT. We went on a three-hour investigative walkabout up and down 133. And boy, did we get a lot of information from that trip. The information gathered on this field trip and during interviews with other folks experiencing mobility challenges, temporary or permanent, contributed significantly to the anecdotal evidence supporting a need for proactive safety improvements. And among the several areas of concern, the by far most problematic were one, no pedestrian respite islands midway where the road is very wide and it takes longer to cross. We had many people say, "Yeah, push the button, but I can't get all the way across." And there I am in the middle. No, we need respite islands where the road is very wide. And there are not enough crossworks, crosswalks where they are most needed, where people are jaywalking. We don't have a legal way to cross, and many pedestrians need to go, depending where you start, more than a quarter mile out of their way, and then double back just to get to City Market, which is our only supermarket. I mean, it's not like this is a rare need, it's every day. Our interviewed gentlemen in wheelchairs, for them, the extra distance puts them at risk for shoulder and arm injury, one already having some symptoms of overuse, and running down the wheelchair battery risking an unsafe completion of planned errands. So our interviewees told us that they generally do not go that extra mile to use the inadequate designated crosswalks. They actually, at this point, prefer to jaywalk in their wheelchairs to go between City Market and, say, the Dollar Store. When we heard this, it was abundantly clear that Carbondale has a serious problem needing immediate attention. So this begs the question, if we can't keep our residents reasonably safe when going about their daily business, what are we doing here? So CDOT, thank you, Bill, has been very generous with their time and respectful attention to our concerns. Bill and Andy Staley, another member of the CDOT design team, spent an additional one and a half hours on a follow-up Zoom call to address our concerns. And a few of the simpler issues have already been addressed. We now do have more crosswalk stripes than we used to, more accessible crosswalk push buttons than we used to, and some yield to pedestrian signs that we did not have before. To be clear, is there a good start? But designing and funding the big picture fixes are still looming.
Thanks, Sue. So we're nearing our time on this item, and I know that we have a lot of questions and things to discuss.
Two slides left. So I want to go back to the 2013 Access Control Plan. Do I need to get closer to Mike? I'm sorry. I just want to read you what the trustees said about it. "The town is concerned with the lack of locations where they feel pedestrians and bicyclists can safely cross 133 from east to west and vice versa. With only three signalized intersections and long distances between these signals, the town feels that pedestrians, bicyclists, do not travel to these locations to safely cross the street on a green light, but rather wait for a perceived large enough gap in traffic and cross at various locations along the corridor. One possible solution could be the addition of safe crossings at mid-block locations throughout the corridor." That's 11 years ago. So it's, we're saying it's really past time to act. And we're going to end our presentation with an ask. That the Board of Trustees have a commitment, make a commitment with accountability for transforming 133 to an aesthetically pleasing and safe street through town and a 2025 budget allocation sufficient to create a safe pedestrian crossing at City Market by the end of the budget year. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki, and thanks, everybody who helped put that together. It's a pretty incredible product that you've delivered to us. And I really appreciate all the effort and time that's gone into it, and you did it really professionally. And, you know, we're used to hearing people complain about problems, and we're not as used to people coming with really specific solutions. So I really appreciate your solution-oriented approach. And thanks, Bill, for CDOT's collaboration. It sounds like that's been really critical to this and to town staff, Kevin and everybody that's helped get to this point, the Bike Ped Trails Commission and everybody else. So just start with that. As far as tonight, you know, where to go with this discussion? Like, I don't think we need to decide right now, are we reducing the speed limit? Are we doing exactly this or exactly that? I think we should ask some questions, give some general feedback and general thoughts on what you just heard, and then discuss next steps. What do we want to commit to, and what might that process look like? So with that, I'd open it up to questions as well as just a general discussion and your thoughts on that. What we've been asked to do and the information that we've been presented with. Anybody want to start? Go for it, Eric.
A last question. Can you, in addition to this, which I think is a really good ask for us, can you talk, or maybe it's Bill, a little bit about, and I can't find where I read it, what is the opportunity for us and what is the action that would be needed to be taken to reduce the speed limit in the different parts of town? And I was just scrolling, because I had made notes of it, but I can't find where it is.
So we wrote the report based on the information that we found, which gives you ways to reduce the speed limit. But Bill really advised us that that is not what it takes. Because if you look at 133 and even places around town where we have a 20 mile an hour speed limit, people don't care. They go wherever they feel they could go fast. And so the recommendations of Bill and I think other traffic engineers is that you really have to change it to make the street uncomfortable for people to go fast, like we did on Eighth Street. You know, you need to put in bulbous, you need to put in safety islands. You need to make it so that you don't have just this wide open area, sort of like we have on Merrill or we have on, you know, where you, on Village Road now too, where people just feel comfortable going faster. You have to make it so that people don't feel comfortable. And Bill, if you want to add anything to that, feel free to just jump in, or anybody else who is, you know, walking along with us.
I mean, Bill, yeah, if you have any other notes on sort of, part of your ask, I thought was going to be to immediately change the speed limit, because the last time we saw you, that's where you were. So it sounds like that thinking has evolved, and you're saying, "Add these safety improvements first." Okay. Bill?
Yes, that's what, I would agree with that completely. We need to put in the infrastructure there to start naturally slowing down the traffic.
Can you hear?
Yeah, we, sorry, Bill, we're having a really hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, I got to keep this thing right next to my face. Yes, I agree with what she just said. We need to build the infrastructure. The, we need to build the infrastructure so that the traffic will slow down. That's the only way you're going to really be able to change the speed limit through there because of the process of how speed limits are set. So it's, it's thirty-five miles an hour now. That's what people are doing through there. But if you put in, say, a roundabout or if you put in a crosswalk like the line shown, that will start naturally slowing down the traffic. And at that point, a request could be made for another speed study, and we might be able to drop the speed at that point. As you put in more stuff that slows down the traffic, that helps to get the speed limit dropped.
Yeah, sorry, Bill, we're losing you again. I think your mic is just really sensitive and it's tough to hear, and then it's really kind of binging. But I, I think we're getting the gist that it sounds like the first focus should be on the infrastructure. And I think that that's been something that this board has historically agreed with, that it's about how you design your streets. And if you have a low speed limit on a, what feels like a highway, nobody's going to follow it. If you design it to where it feels like you should go slow, then people probably will.
If I may, because I, Bill, we didn't hear an awful lot of what you said. I, I just want to maybe reword what I, we had talked about in our conversation. And that the starting point is not to change the speed limit, but to change the conditions that are perceived and that people choose to go the right, the right speed. It doesn't matter what the sign says, people are going to go what they're comfortable doing. And I hope that we communicated that. So with the bulbous and pedestrian islands and things in the driver's central vision instead of peripheral vision, everybody complains about the push button, the crosswalks that are, the flashing lights are out here and people are looking there. So if there's not a pedestrian island with a flashing light, it's, that will help calm the traffic as well.
Okay, thanks.
If I could.
I have one thing to it. I mean, Frank is here and he's beginning a project for H Friendly Carbondale around landscaping on one thirty-three. And that, again, that's part of, you know, changing people's lines of sight. You can make it more beautiful and at the same time, slow people down with the things that you put there to beautify it. So we're trying to take a long-term approach and work with the town in every way that we can to actually slow people down, not just put up a speed limit sign.
And I think what Bill told us is that because we had a traffic control study done in 2016, that kind of overrides the part that you, that you're looking for in your document, which says that if you have businesses along both sides, and Kevin and I looked at it with a ruler to see whether or not we had enough businesses, then you could ask for it to be designated as a business district. If you were to get it designated as a business district, then the speed limit would be twenty-five miles an hour, which would mean like from the bridge to the roundabout. And it looks on, on the map like we could do that, but the 2016 traffic, they'd have to do another traffic control study. And then from the roundabout to the RVR traffic light has enough residences along that stretch now that it could be declared designated as a residential district. And that would change the speed limit from thirty-five to thirty. But in spending time talking with a traffic engineer, I can't disagree, having seen what happened with how, how much slower the traffic is now on Eighth Street. And when we finish it with all the bulbous, I, I think that that people tend to go slower with the parked cars and the traffic calming.
There's, there was something was mentioned in the video that we didn't focus on it because we're focused on safety. But this also goes with creating wealth. Okay, streets create wealth. And so I think this is a, you, you all want to keep in mind that this is also a, a commercial issue of really having a town that prospers around streets and not just traffic running through it.
Right.
Thanks, Erica.
Well, I mean, I'll just follow up that that is that I'm still willing to explore both. So I own a business in Delta County. I drive to Delta once a week. I go through Somerset, I go through Hotchkiss, and those drop to twenty-five and people go twenty-five because you know you'll get pulled over. Like, it's just, there's a reputation. And if it was thirty-five, it would be too quick for Hotchkiss's Main Street. And so I think it's not so much, I mean, thirty-five is fast for people to be trying to cross and jaywalk. So it's less about, I, we want to make sure people are going thirty-five. I would love to see them go lower. And it's always bothered me that our school zone is thirty-five. And it's like, reduce your speed, school zone, and, but there's no actual sign. So then our police are like, okay, well, it's thirty-five, you know? So there's nothing for them to enforce to go slower in those areas. So I'd still be open to exploring that. And I, I am not a traffic engineer, but just I, going on this drive for my commute, I have a lot of time to think about it, and I go through these communities and I see they all get to go twenty-five through their communities, including through the city of Delta. And so it starts to be like, oh, well, why can't we? And then we do some of these pedestrian, really make it safer, make it more beautiful if we want to. People usually tell us they want to make it more beautiful because they think our town should be more attractive. And I'm okay with it not being attractive, so I'll just say that on the aesthetic stuff. But I think adding more, you know, crossings and pedestrian islands and bulbous along with reducing the speed, even if down to thirty, would be helpful.
And we'll be happy to, everybody told me not to say that we're going to do anything else.
But I appreciate just having one ask, so.
But, you know, to explore that and to talk with the national organizations that have guided us on how we might have both.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any thoughts?
I agree with Erica about the speed limit. I mean, it, it helps to have it go lower. And, but since we're, we're actually already beginning some of this, so this is great timing. Kevin's about to do a crossing at Cowan, which CDOT has approved. That's going to have lights in the middle, so we're going to have a model. And I'd be very interested in trying to figure out how we make this happen in 2025. And I think having already done one, it should be a little simpler for us to figure out the process of doing it again. And we allocated fifty thousand dollars for that Cowan crossing. Kevin will give us an update of, was that enough? And I, I think it should be part of our budget discussions to make this happen. It's a, I think it's a high priority. I know the MAP process is moving forward. They're going to have tons of recommendations. I can't imagine this not being part of it, but in my mind, this is a high priority, and we should try and make it happen as quickly as possible.
We did talk with MAP, and one of the things that we were happy was that we were, came out with general agreement. They didn't do all the intersections we did, but of the ones that we did do, we're in agreement about what needs to be done there.
I mean, anybody who's lived in this town any length of time knows that it's really hard to get across one thirty-three unless you're in a car. Even in a car, it's hard, but at least it's, seems a little safer. But, you know, since the roundabout went in, we do have that key area. It's not perfect, but there's nothing on the south. There's no crossings until you get to Snowmass. So, well, there's the weird one by Rumba Liquors.
And Dolores Way is still a nightmare.
Yeah, so we know we have a lot of. We have a lot of issues related, but this is a key one, and I'd love to see us move forward on it.
Okay, thanks, Colin. Other thoughts, questions?
I would just say that, sorry, Chris, that the City Market intersection is used a lot, but I think that the Montessori on one thirty-three to Went is just as high of a priority because the school district, I mean, the school zone is, the, the speed limit doesn't actually change in the school zone there. And the kids cross there all the time because they have to go so far out of their way to get to the other safe, safe crossings. So I would just say that I'd like to see both of those go in in the next year because of kids crossing who generally aren't quite as aware as grownups. Although we could make an argument that kids probably look closer than adults.
That's, Chris, you were starting.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo people's concerns here. And, and, and I, I do think we can, we can get to, to some kind of solution next year on the, on the City Market or potentially the, the Montessori as well. I'll just quibble with one minor thing, just that City Market's not the only place to shop for food in the town. There is Garcia's and the Carniceria and Mana and La Placita and the Torteria. So just push back on that, that assertion.
They're still on one thirty-three.
They're still on one thirty-three.
All of them.
Yeah.
You can choose your side, maybe. Ross, I see that you're unmuted. Did you want to add something or have a question?
Yeah, well, first of all, I just, I just wanted to, to thank H Friendly Carbondale for doing really an incredible job. I don't, I don't think it, we can really say enough about how thorough and deliberate and comprehensive this report was. And I, I'm more than happy to give them more time now or more time later. I think it speaks to, and this will be a small little tangent, but it speaks to what happens when we give the public more than three minutes. We can, we can give it, give the public more, more, more than enough time to, to just complain. And, and there's, there's plenty of complaining here. There, there are legitimate fears and concerns, but also giving the public time to explain, to present, and to really put into the public record and, and to speak to, to us as, as trustees directly about these concerns. So just sort of, you know, another round of applause for that. And, and a note in our, maybe, maybe for, for a retreat that we consider how, 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 how we can better encourage the members of the public to be able to present at, at greater length when the work has been done and when solutions are there to be presented. I, I'm all in favor of doing all we can. It's, I think the, the message here is that it's, 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 we are past due to, to make changes where we can. And, and that we are fortunate that we, we don't have a tragedy to refer to just yet. But it's inevitable, and we, this, this needs to be the priority that, that Nikki and Ron and Sue have, have clearly presented to us. In terms of budgeting, I certainly think we should, we do, do all that we can to make sure this is a budget priority. I also think, and Kevin spoke to this, I think at a Bikes, Peds, Trails meeting that I attended, you know, that we, we can request that the development community in their development applications pays a mitigation fee to cover the, to, to cover the, the costs of creating appropriate conditions surrounding their, their new buildings. And I think we need to, to consider that strongly so that we don't end up continuing to play catch up for the next decade or decades. And that's where I'll leave it.
Thanks, Ross. Christina, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. And again, Nikki, Ron, and Sue, thanks for the presentation, and it's always nice to learn something. It was interesting, the Strode video. I, I wanted to hear Bill a little bit more clearly because I was really intrigued by how his, it sounds like in Gunnison that speed limit stayed thirty-five. And with that pedestrian look, and I guess you guys are saying comfort. You know, I wanted to hear more about its effectiveness. And it does look like it's a little bit, we would have to add more, maybe, street by the diagram I'm looking at, but I'm sure we could get more information on that. And thanks again, Bill, for being on the call. I also agree with everybody that I feel it is very important to have it on our budget allocation. And I think safe streets is what everybody wants. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Christina. I think you're hearing a lot of support. We're going to have a retreat four weeks from this evening where we're going to do exactly that, which is setting priorities before budget season. And I think that we'll make sure that this is one of them. I've got in our list of topics to discuss the retreat, and I think we'll hear from Kevin and, and look at Public Works, and we'll look at the map plan eventually, and we'll see how it all fits in. But I think you're hearing a commitment to working on some of these issues, and particularly the, the crossing at City Market and perhaps others like the one near Ross Montessori. You know, I think the bigger issue of the Strode, I think it's really well, well put. It was interesting, there was a, the Historical Society did a recent interview with former mayors and aired it on KD and K, and I went back and listened to it. And it was either our former Public Works Director or our former planner, I can't remember which, said it, talked about the fact that when one thirty-three was built, it was a bypass because Carbondale was right here. And so it was very intentionally out there, and it was a road that went around town. And then over time, naturally, the town has grown, and that's the area that there was to grow. And so we've sort of grown around what was a road, and now we're trying to sort of retrofit it to be a street. So I think that's, it's worth just acknowledging, like, that's a dilemma. It's not because of somebody's bad decision-making or, or, or bad planning or something like that. It's just sort of, you know, very different from the way Highway eighty-two cuts through Aspen or cuts through Glimwood. And it's very clearly, it's their main street and it's this highway. And same with Delta and these places. And then you, you know, you, you bring your buildings right up to it. And I think we've been grappling with that, the fact that it's a, a Strode for a long time. And, and some people wondered in our comp plan and in our UDC, why the direction was to pull the buildings up to the road. And like the newer apartments around the roundabout, you see that. That is to make it feel more like a street. That's very intentional, and it gives you that sense of, oh, it's, it's narrowing, I better slow down. And so we have some of those things in place. It's not the first time we thought about it, but I don't think we've ever really focused on it in the way that we are right now. So I can't promise exactly that we're going to redesign that whole thing and rip everything out and bring sidewalks right up to it and all that. Like, it, it's probably going to be some sort of hybrid for, for the future. But what I'm optimistic about is that some of these fairly immediate changes can make a big impact, and then that that can start to lead to, to some other things, whether it's a speed limit reduction and, you know, more businesses brought up to it and, you know, crossings every couple of blocks. And I think looking at places like Gunnison, where it's kind of a similar layout, Crested Butte kind of has a similar layout where it's like, once you get into town, everything stops. But just outside of town, you've got a pretty fast-moving highway, but then, and it really does bisect town. And so I think with, with Bill and other support, we can, we can come up with some good ideas. So with that, I think we're in a good place to, you know, our, our agreement tonight was to hear you out. We really appreciate all the work that, that went into this. And I think you're hearing a pretty strong commitment from everybody on this board to continue working on this and to prioritize some of these improvements for next year. So, thank you. All right, with that, let's take a five-minute break, and then we have an update on the pool and a contract. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Would you have a full report that you could send to me?
It was in.
Yeah, but it sounds like it worked out good, which, yeah.
Okay, I think we're going to get started on our next agenda item here.
That's, well, that's good.
Okay, all right. Do we have staff? Do we have anybody sitting here?
Eric is on his way.
Okay, I think he's right there. Eric, Margaret, if you're presenting, you can come on up. I think we're going to get started. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We're going to go ahead and get started on our next agenda item, which is the guaranteed maximum price for demolition, utility work, and pool excavation, phase one. Off here. Is this somebody online or is this in person?
Yeah, we should have a
Wember representative, yeah, Chris.
So we're going online, so yeah, Wember's going to be kind of walking us through their memo. They produced a memo that you have in your packet. So he'll kind of walk us through and kind of, just to explain, you know, for some of the newer trustees, our AIA contract with A.D. Miller and what is a GMP and why we're asking for an early GMP at this point of the project. So, Chris, do you want to take it off?
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, can you see the screen? Okay.
We sure can.
Awesome. Okay, so this is obviously the future vision of your Aquatics Center. And it's very exciting. But first of all, before I go any further, I want to give kudos to the 133 team. That was a very impressive presentation. And obviously, you can tell they spent a lot of time getting that put together and to your guys' patience and all of their hard work. I don't know if I can follow that, but I'm going to try. So, in any case, so with that, as per Eric's comment there, we put together a, what's called a GMP AIA document amendment last week. And what this is enabling our team to do, and I don't know if anybody has filled in further the, kind of the spaces between the lines there. But I am representing the owner's representative of the team. And we're working alongside Eric and Margaret and Lauren to make sure this project keeps moving forward. We're working also with A.D. Miller, which is the general contractor, and also Land Plus Shelter, which is the Architect of Record, and their consultants to keep this project moving forward in the sense of schedule, time, and budget. We started working with A.D. Miller and Land Plus Shelter back in March of this past year to start to put together pricing for the schematic design phase. And then Land Plus Shelter issued out what's called a DD phase budget. And we were able to work and come close to, the number is close to that schematic design phase. But at the same time, we wanted to keep the schedule moving so that the project could stay on with getting things started this summer of this year. And we also submitted the drawing package to the state, not to the state, but also to the city for plan review and permit. So part of that effort is to lock in on pricing, schedule, and also long lead items, if you will, for this effort to get the project started. And that's what you're seeing in this GMP amendment document that was issued last week. Okay. Let me go ahead and stop here a second for sharing. All right. And so with that, we submitted. And I think everybody has their, either within their file there, but kind of a description of what the partial GMP allows for us to do. And I'm going to first open it to any questions, if anybody has anything here at the table before we get started. So anybody want to state or ask anything at this time?
I mean, I think we'll probably have a lot of questions as you go, but I'm not, I mean, is there a particular type of question you're asking us for now?
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure why, or what you guys understand is this request to submit a partial GMP at this time, rather than going for a full blown pricing exercise. So right now, if you read the document that was submitted, we're submitting for, basically, let me get to that document here. Hold on a second, I'm sorry. Stop sharing. Just get to the clarification.
I mean, I think it would help, Chris, if you'd give us a quick overview of why a partial GMP now. We, this packet came to us sort of in pieces. So I reviewed a lot of information and then didn't have time to actually go back through the memo in as much detail as I usually would. So can you just give us an overview of why a partial GMP and not a full GMP?
Sure. Bear with me a quick second here. So what we put together at that time was the items that they've identified for this this request and/or, if you will, I'm going to share my screen here a second. And you guys may have view to this, but the five categories that they are stating that they're pricing right now is for demolition of the existing conditions. So that means the existing pool and the existing pool building, okay? And then also surveying of the existing conditions. And then the inclusion of the pools and sauna as part of that project, which comes in right around $3.4 million. And then early procurement of long lead items, earthwork, and then also utilities. So to kind of keep the schedule moving, which is the main focus of this whole discussion, is to get them engaged and under contract to start this scope of work. So based on their schedule right now, they are looking to start this work. Share my screen here a second. Next week. And let's see here, share screen. Let me know if you can see that here on the schedule. Is that coming up on your screen there?
Yeah.
Okay. So they're looking to pick up the project and start to mobilize the 15th of July next week. And they'll start putting the fencing around the scope of work. And then they'll start to demolish the existing pool and all that structure. We currently have the demo permit in place. And so basically, the whole goal of this right now is to get them up and mobilized to start the project so that we're looking at completion date right now of October of next year. That's the main focus. So if you see right here, demo the building, they would start next Tuesday. And then they would be done by July 22nd of this year.
So I guess the question really is, why aren't we getting the full GMP right now?
Because the pricing right now, and that's a very good question. We started off with what's called the schematic design pricing, okay? And then from schematic design, they went to design development. And the pricing that you're seeing right now is based on design development pricing. Then the Architect of Record issued what's called a 95% CD package or construction document package that also went to the city and the planning department for permit. And they're currently working on finishing up some of the pricing for those components. And in order to keep the project on schedule, we've asked them to lock in on certain elements of the project that they know that they can stay within their pricing scenario while they finish up their pricing for the CD package. So there is going to be another phase of pricing that we're going to be receiving. But this first effort right now that you're being presented with is for phase one, for the start of demolition of the existing conditions and also starting to get ready for the new pools, okay? What's excluded that I can share with you is the new pool building. We do not have 100% construction budget for that building right at this time. And so that's what's coming here by the end of this week and also the first part of next week. So the contractors indicated to us that they look to have the pricing for that part of the project done by, you know, the end of this week or the first part of next week. So the goal is to get them started on demolition and also getting ready for the new pools.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I think our town manager, Lauren, has something to say.
I just hoping to clarify a little bit. As far as I understand it, and Chris, you can correct me if I didn't understand from our meeting with yourself and Dave yesterday, the reason that we're getting a partial GMP now is because we could get this pricing now and lock this in and get them started so that the pool doesn't fall behind. They're ready to start the demolition. But the new pricing, whether it comes in next week or three weeks from now or four weeks from now, if we waited that long to be able to start the demolition, we would already be setting the project behind. I don't know if you noticed, but on the timeline that he showed, looks like we're already a week behind on demolition. And we did not want to hold the project up. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets and the more chance that the contractors get distracted by other jobs while they're waiting for ours, and then it gets pushed even more. So it's my understanding that that's why they went ahead with a partial while we're waiting for the rest of the pricing.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, yes, it is correct. And the other thing too is the pool contractor right now, which is a subcontractor to the general contractor, is stating that they could possibly do two pools at once. One of the discussions was because of the amount of activity for all of the pools, they may have to do each pool separately, but they may be able to do two pools at one time, which will pick up the timeframe of expediting the schedule. But we would still be looking right now to the team. We're looking at October of 2025 for completion of the overall project.
Okay. I mean, is there more that you're going to present or should we just keep asking questions? I don't really know what we're being presented.
Right now would be more about any questions that you may have. We've obtained pricing from the general contractor in order to get this project started. And right now, we're locking in on those prices. So the GMP that we submitted in an AIA document that you guys received late last week is allowing us to state to the contractor, you will not be going beyond these prices. This is it. And this is based on the scope of work that you guys have priced and we're ready to go forward.
Quick question. So this puts us in a spot, if I understand it, where we've committed to getting this project rolling without having a guaranteed price for the rest of the project. Whereas so from a competitive perspective or from a negotiating perspective, are we putting ourselves literally in the hole? And this is just a question. I think it's important to look at both sides of the equation here that do we get ourselves five months down the road with a hole in the ground and a developer offering a price to finish the completed construction or the design as per construction documents that we can't, you know, that we can't afford or don't feel is fair? I mean, do we want to get going before we know what the whole thing is going to cost? That's what we're really, that's what we're really talking about. Just want a little bit of assurance that this is a smart move. And I don't see in the memo a discussion of the downsides of this.
That's a very good point and slash question. The only item right now that we're kind of monitoring is the pricing that's to come back on the actual building itself, okay? Everything else has been priced and the contractor has confirmed that their pricing is going to align with the DD pricing. The actual building project, which is the, you know, the structure itself with the mechanical systems, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, the offices, may need to be possibly value engineered. But we're not committing to that right now because we want to make sure that he's got his subs lined in for that scope of work. But right now, everybody is saying, meaning when I say everybody, the general contractor, his subs, they have locked in on a price for the pool, the demolition of the existing scope of the project, meaning the existing buildings and pools. The demolition of the existing scope of of the project, meaning the existing buildings and pools and also the utilities. So. The main thrust right now is is. What we're we're going for approval on and the building may need to be further analyzed, but. The goal is right now to stay on schedule with with the project so that we can have this done by by next year.
I have a question. Um, Chris, right? Chris?
Yes.
Um, thank you for presenting on that master project budget. So if I'm understanding, it sounds like the building itself. Is the only one that's going to be. It not locked. Is that where you highlighted blue? Or maybe if you could help me find. Because is this not, does this master budget not include the building itself? Because the way I'm reading, I thought it included everything. But then I'm thinking that what you're saying is what's highlighted in blue is probably not price lock because this is a partial lock.
So so very good question. Again, the original pricing was it was based on schematic design drawings. And then they the contractor came back and priced the design development package, which is the second column, if you will, on the pricing, okay? The the spa right now, which is four hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Is not included in that pricing. And so that is something that the team, meaning more of the town, is asked, we really want to make sure that's in the project. So our goal is to keep that in the project, but that means that the actual aesthetics of the building may need to be further analyzed. So the goal right now, back to your question, is. The pricing that you're seeing is is we're at a hundred percent locked in for everything except the building at this time.
That's on where it says single story.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the building.
That's the, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That had three million, seven sixty four. That's correct.
So so you're talking about, you're talking about continuing to to value engineer, basically pare back. Even more so than what's what's been proposed because I because the the first slide you showed shows that sort of canopy. A translucent canopy, which I my understanding is that's not in the, that's not even in the the. Construction documents at this point anyway. Is that correct? So we're doing, we're taking, so we're taking.
I apologize for interrupting you. Your. Your. Understanding and perception is a hundred percent accurate. It it's always the design intent to show what the hope would be, right? Rather than showing you something that's minimal and then add on to that, but. What we're experiencing right now is there may be some reanalysis of the finishes of the exterior building. And the contractor is working with a current subcontractor right now to see if we can dial in on the pricing of the concrete block. And the glass glass block of the exterior building. So all the functions are still in place. It's just really the design concept to make sure that it meets the budget of what we're currently going after.
Thanks, Chris. Jess?
Uh, I have a few questions on where you have single story and it says includes three hundred thousand dollars of planned VE. Are you saying that the three million dollars for the single story, you've already VE'd out the three hundred thousand?
Uh, no, that needs to occur in this next phase of pricing.
So that does not include any value engineering?
That does not.
Okay, so I have. Many concerns about the contingencies and what's happening with the contingencies. So in order to meet this early phase GMP. What they're saying is that they are reducing our owner's contingency from seven percent to five percent. At the bottom where it says owner contingency construction, it says it's sent seven percent. It was seven percent at schematic design pricing. We are taking our contingency, our five percent design and soft cost contingency. And we are applying them in the blue along with eighty thousand dollars of our owner contingency for construction right now. Just to hit this GMP price without construction documents and without CD pricing. So I'm concerned that we started with only. Seven percent as an owner's contingency before construction documents and now we're reducing it down to five percent. At a GMP. That is only for a partial phase. To possibly save two weeks. When we don't. When we're not even going to get this season or next season. Anyway, with the pool. So it feels. From the very beginning, I've had concerns about the contingency and how it's being.
Can I, can I add something really quickly to you on that? So the overall consensus from owner representation and also design slash construction. Seven percent is really high, okay? Even even five percent is pretty high. And so we we've typically seen anywhere from. Three on up to four percent, okay? So we we kept in the original number of what was what was shown. But at the same time, if we dialed it back, you know, to the five percent. And right now, you know, at DD, we're looking at five hundred and fifty six thousand, if you will. You know, for contingency, just to be on the safe side. We still feel that that's a pretty good number based on the overall budget of this project. But we're we're not going to be. I don't want to hide behind anything to say that there may need to be some value engineering to the overall building of the project, okay? So the goal right now is if 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 you and and your team and the overall. Aspect of the project is to stick, keep this thing on schedule. Is is moving forward with these items that we've identified in this GMP amendment to begin the demolition and then also the pool scope. Then we can start to dial in on the other items as part of phase two for the GMP is what we're kind of signaling. But to your concern, and I apologize for cutting you off there. Is if your team feels that we need to wait until we get further pricing, you know, scenarios and also. Confirmation. The only thing that's going to do is, yes, we will get confirmation, but it may push out the schedule. So. That that's that's the that's the item I need to identify with you.
Can can I just just ask one more clarifying question?
Sure.
So you've got the owner's contingencies spelled out at the bottom of this. Is the contractor's contingency still remaining at? I think I saw it at four to five percent. Is that in the construction budget in the blue?
Yes.
So you guys, the AD Miller has their own four to five percent construction contingency. And you're saying as the owner's rep, you're comfortable with a five percent owner's contingency prior to CD pricing?
Yes.
I mean, and I think we would all like to see the full GMP right now. What I'm asking myself is, would there be anything in there? That would be so out of expectations that we'd stop the whole project and say, don't. Demo this thing because what we're allowing to go forward if we approve this is demolition for a few weeks. Which is a necessary first step. So I I share all these concerns. That I think Ross has expressed, you know, we're we're kind of committed, but we don't know exactly what the final price tag will be. And I think Jess is building on that. But I don't know that there's going to be something in there where we say, okay, now, based on that, what it was going to cost to build the building. We're just not doing this project. So stop the demo. I mean.
Well, so one of the things I would ask, sorry, Colin, is. It's a risk analysis, right? Is are we comfortable with the risk of they're already. Higher than what they expected without any VE and on the building itself, it's a pretty bare bones, single story building with no interior hallways. Can we really get three hundred thousand dollars VE'd out of that?
We we believe that we can, based on the finish, the finishes that the architect has selected. And we've we've had discussions with the contractor that we we can dial it down. It's really the aesthetics of the building and what you as the community would see. That would best represent, you know, what what you guys want to provide to your community members.
So my, I was trying to get to the question of.
Sorry.
Can we seamlessly proceed to the next phase of construction? After demo. With what you know today, because the biggest risk when you take. When you take on a partial GMP and you say, we're going to, we're going to keep moving forward without having all the information. It happens often. What I want to know is that we're not going to hit a point. Where the pool is demoed. And we're under construction. And we have to stop and remobilize at any point because it's going to cost more money for sure to go in now. Just to say that we've started the process and then stop and reevaluate and possibly redesign to get more money out of the budget. And that remobilization is a significant cost usually. So the risk analysis for me is. Are we sure that we can seamlessly go from this phase to the next without stopping?
Or my question is. What's? What happens if we don't start demo right now? If the price will still be affected.
Well, and the schedule move, the schedule moves out. That's the biggest thing is we move into twenty twenty six.
But then price wise, then that's going to be a risk because if we don't start. I mean, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. If we if we don't start. If we don't start now and wait, that'll also affect price or we don't know.
Well, with the GMP, we 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 lock in with the contractor and they, if if it goes above above and beyond their numbers, then that's their responsibility. Okay? So they lock into the guaranteed maximum price. And that's the agreement.
So that's the benefit of having a full GMP.
Yes.
Yes. Well, but also partial. So partial is based on the actual scope that we've agreed upon.
Unless we have to stop and remobilize.
Devil's advocate, you're correct. I mean, yes.
So one question I have is. Why is the schedule driving this when we know we're going to miss two seasons? We're going to open in October twenty twenty five. The pool's not going to open. So what's the? What's the impetus to go? So we finish in April of twenty twenty six. I mean, does it really matter?
I think part of it is concerns of escalation, but but signing a GMP in a a full GMP. Four weeks from now. That we're still locked in. So the escalation cost is we're protecting ourselves if we sign the GMP in four weeks, the full GMP.
Yeah.
And is that how long it would take? Is you think that's how long the full GMP is going to take?
He says that they're going to have full CD pricing in three to four weeks. He said by the end of next week, my guess is it'll be three to four weeks. To get full GMP pricing on construction documents. Right now, this is based on design documents, not construction documents.
And and I I'm going to add on to your comment there. We we've been told by the general contractor, they will have pricing of the ninety five percent CD package by the end of this week. If for any comfort level, for whatever that's worth, I mean, that's, you know, probably early next week. But that that then is what's described as phase two of our GMP pricing. So right now, yeah, we're in phase one of the GMP pricing. And can you see the schedule there up on the screen? And so this is what's been listed under the partial GMP that we issued out last week. Just mobilization, starting, you know, July fifteenth and finishing out by August seventh is is kind of the the main thrust right now, but. It's really up to you and your team, how you would like to to proceed.
So question. We have a meeting in two weeks. Could we review this then and see where they are instead of just because it does seem like once we're in, we're in. And we better keep going. And if we have a snafu and all of a sudden we got to stop, that would suck. I'd much rather us have a full GMP and just then we know we can go. And if it takes us two more weeks. Prices aren't going to go up that much in two weeks or four weeks. So I don't know what the rush is.
Other thoughts, Lauren?
I'm just playing devil's advocate based on the meeting that I had with Dave Detwiler and Chris yesterday. One of, there were two concerns that haven't really been mentioned here that Dave Detwiler had mentioned and. Jess, you have all the construction experience. I do not.
Just to clarify, who's Dave Detwiler?
Dave Detwiler is the outgoing owner's rep who's been working with the town. Chris is coming in to take his place because Dave is moving to the East Coast. So. I'm sorry, Chris, you're being thrown into the fire here. But there were two other things that were mentioned yesterday, if I understood them correctly. And we had a long meeting yesterday because Eric and I had questions, same kinds of questions that you guys are bringing up. One of the things that was mentioned was that the contractor is waiting and. He there, they were concerned that he would take other work and push us back even farther. Because he's not just going to sit there and twiddle his thumbs. I have no idea what that actual on the ground situation is. And the other thing that Dave mentioned was. That if we push it, it's not just waiting until April of. Twenty twenty six, it's the expanded cost, the increased cost of having to do winter work. And not having a full construction season this year, not being able to stop whenever whenever they were going to stop. I haven't memorized the the schedule. I don't know how to analyze those things. But those were the things that were mentioned yesterday as far as the things that would. Push this to get them started now.
So I just, go ahead. Chris, when would we get the full GMP? Estimated, I guess, or I guess, when when do you think that would come? Is that what's coming in like four weeks or?
No, I I would say it would be two to three weeks. Right now, we've been told by the general contractor, they're looking to get their pricing in by the end of this week for, you know, the next phase. And so we would need to then look at that and then start to discuss, do we need to value engineer this because it's over? Or that we're in line with budget? So back to your question, I would say two to three weeks for the final GMP.
Okay. And then so what we're really, I mean, I appreciate the. You know, we don't, we want to be risk adverse, but it doesn't sound like if we're just waiting on the pricing for the single building. That it's going to come back. At at an amount that I would advocate for putting a hold on the project, like if it's three hundred thousand dollars. I'd even be inclined to go find that, but it's not going to come back to six million dollars and suddenly we have a six million dollar single story building that we're. So I'm less risk averse and feel comfortable moving forward with this because I don't see anything that would. We would learn in the next two weeks that would suddenly put a hold on this project. But that's what I'm.
I mean, I think there's.
There's some risk each way, right? There's some risk if we go forward with this, that the next phase of the GMP comes back in. Two to four weeks. It's higher than we thought. And we figure out what we're going to do about that. There's some risk if we wait that we push it out further and it delays construction and it causes more winter work, it sounds like. I mean, it doesn't sound like a huge difference to me. I'm having a hard time with that. Like if this was like pushing us into another season or pushing us into winter and we weren't planning on working in winter, that'd be one thing. But if we're talking about. Two weeks. I guess I'm. Not terribly.
I just have a question clarification. When you said you had the schedule pulled up and you said that this GMP was only reflective of demo. That's not, this GMP reflects the pool. The existing conditions, the demo, surveying, earthwork and utilities. So it's, I mean, it's five point one million dollars. In the GMP that we're talking about tonight. So it's not just the demo scope.
That that's correct. The the goal was the starting point. So it's it's getting started by next week. Then we stay on schedule with the. Then we stay on schedule with the October of twenty twenty five timeline. But back to your point, right now, it's demolition and then getting the pools in place for that construction.
Uh, anybody have a suggestion on how to move forward? Or any other questions? Eric, anything to add?
Um, just what I'd like to add, I think, you know, Lauren did kinda cover some of the issues of trying to get this going, you know, with the timing. Um, and also locking down that pool contractor. There's not many specialized pool contractors out there, so we do. Do you wanna think about, you know, how we can get that pool contractor locked down as soon as possible for the project? Um, and then also, you know, when they did a, the AD Miller did a site visit. Um, and was, one part of the contingency and why did we had, we didn't have some good data on the actual, um. What's underneath the ground there, because we couldn't really, you know, dig the correct, uh, amount of pits there when we were operational. To get that, that soil data that we needed. When, when AD Miller was up here, they went and took a look at what they were unearthing next door. At the Forest Service project and, and felt a lot better about what's underneath the ground there. Um, looking at what they were pulling out of, of their project. So, and part of that. Risk on the contingency was not knowing what's underneath the ground. So that, that, that's just something to, to think about as far as use of contingency. I, I, I felt better about. The way AD Miller felt about, um, you know, the earthwork that was gonna need, be needed to dig the pools there after they saw the Forest Service site.
You know, we just say with this discussion, I'm comfortable, uh, moving forward with this tonight if others are. Um, acknowledging that there's some risk both ways, but, um. I don't think we're gonna have like more leverage to get better pricing on the single story building if we hold out, you know, this is. We know who our contractor is, right? So the contractor is the contractor. We're not going out for competitive bidding or anything like that. And they've been looking at this project throughout. Um, so I feel comfortable moving forward to try to keep us on track. If, if a majority of the board doesn't and we wait. Hopefully two weeks, then, um, I can live with that too.
I, I guess one semi minor, but maybe major consideration scheduling wise is. I mean, ideally, I think it'd be good to get the construction fencing up before mountain fair happens. Um, and sort of secure the site. Um, I, I think that could be in. I wouldn't want us to, uh, be important for me to us not to have some critical thing trying to happen while that's going on. You know, uh, some kind of backend loader, whatever, trying to, or trying to drag a construction. Um, trailer onto the site or something while there's cars coming from every direction and people all over the place. So I don't know where that, how that falls into the schedule exactly. Um, you know, it's sort of hard to read the Gantt chart here, because it's already. Behind, I think, so it's, everything is already a, a week back from this essentially, or?
Uh, we're looking at next Tuesday for them to install the fencing. Um, Tuesday through Thursday, and then they would install the trailer, um, on the nineteenth. So next week is the, is the big week to start to get everything lined up.
And what are BMPs? Install the BMPs?
Online thirteen.
Oh, oh, that, that's the, uh, basically the, getting everything set for the, um. Ecological or, um, when I would describe that the, where they, they line everything up for the, um, uh, environmental. Components.
Okay. So like protecting the ditch or water some?
Exactly.
Like erosion control.
Exactly, yeah, thank you, yeah. Yes, yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I think I'm, I, I don't know, I, I just don't know if like, if what we're gonna learn exactly that's gonna. Are we gonna, I, I think we're sort of got, gotten on this horse no matter what, and I don't think we're gonna get off it. With, I mean. Uh, yeah, I'd, I, I guess I've kind of wondered what kind of surprise, how we would respond to some sort of surprise other than having to just go with it anyway. So I would be inclined to get going, and I do think there's also is a public perception issue of why the hell did you close the pool for? Half, already you've lost half the summer and what the heck's going on? There's nothing happening. So I sort of would like us to be. Moving on it and have people feel like we're not just sitting on our fans and, and, and waiting, waiting out some. Theoretical thing, I guess.
I support, uh, going forward with the partial, um, GMP tonight too.
Other thoughts?
I'm, 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 I'm uncomfortable. I just think in sort of setting the precedent of, and, and I understand there's great, great, I mean. Legitimate arguments in both directions here. I'm uncomfortable, um. Being this close to having a, a, a finished, uh, construction document set and being able to approve that. Um, and leaving ourselves open to who knows what. And I think there's, you know, it's as Ben pointed out that the, there, there, the fear we. To some extent, we're, we're operating by fear. If we fear that they might go somewhere else, you know, and, and, and pick up another pool project in the next two weeks. Um, but if we could say, hey, we need to see this, uh, two weeks from now, um, I would feel, I would feel better about it, but there's seven of us.
Other thoughts?
So, uh, Jess, can you explain again that stop and re-remobilize? Like, I just. Say, go over that again, because that's my deciding factor. I, I don't.
Yeah, what would cause that?
Yeah, what would cause that?
So. If we get through demo and utilities and. The, we start construction on the pool. So a few things can cause it. Pricing on the single story building and not being able to value engineer that out. So. What is our plan if it comes in three hundred thousand dollars more and, or? I mean, we're already a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars over in the grand scheme of things. That's not a lot of money. What's our plan to cover that delta? Are we prepared to just approve more money from the general fund or? Whatever to cover that delta? Are we prepared to just go out and fundraise it? So that's one thing. Um, I asked the question, can you seamlessly proceed to the next phase of construction with what you know today? I would ask that of the contractor. Are they one hundred percent comfortable with going? Knowing that if we sign this and we keep moving, that we're just gonna keep moving. Um, existing demolition and, and excavation are the riskiest part of any construction. We do. That's where people use up their contingency. That's where we find things we weren't expecting. And yes, I'm glad they went and looked at what the Forest Service is doing. Um, I, I hope that they're looking at. How far down the Forest Service is going and how far down we have to go for a, a very deep pool. Um, it's not unheard of in Colorado to go from one block to the next and see different soil conditions. Um, and that really affects it. I'm a little frustrated that AD Miller went and looked at the Forest Service and said, yeah, this. This makes sense. It looks pretty good, but we're gonna bring the owner's contingency down, not ours. So their five percent contingency that they're carrying for themselves has carried across and they've reduced ours. And so I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. That could, excavation and demolition are the most risky part of all construction. And so there's a lot of things that could happen. But those are still risky, even if we go with the full GMP, like those same things would be discovered. So it's not. I would never go into this with five percent can owner's contingency. I would never recommend to an owner to go into this with five percent. Owner's contingency. We're not done with design. I haven't seen a CD set. And we just eliminated our design and soft cost contingency. And so it's, I, I'm, and I'm not saying which, which way I'm gonna vote tonight. I'm not sure. I came in. Really trying to ask these hard questions to make sure that I understand what the risk is to the town of Carbondale and the taxpayers. And I'm not fully convinced that we can't wait three weeks. I have done this before as an owner's rep and as a contractor where we start construction and GMP. Without having CD documents, but. We're gonna be looked at with a fine tooth comb and y- yeah, people are wondering why the heck the pool is not open right now. When we haven't started construction. So there's that to consider too. I'm just. Did we answer the question? Can you seamlessly proceed to the next phase of construction with what you know today?
Are you asking that of our owner's rep?
Yeah, right.
Yes, w- we, we can. What it's gonna take is it's gonna take some adjustments to the aesthetics of the building. So right now, we're finding out that the aesthetics that have been selected by the architect of record. Are pushing the budget and in order to, if we need to, I, I hope not to, but. If we need to dial back in a VE exercise, that's where we're gonna have to go.
Can we, can we tra- translate that to if we need to take away the glass brick, which is really expensive? But also is maybe the one saving grace of an otherwise completely unadorned brick building with no windows. Um, that, that that's what we may, may sort of, the corner that we may find ourselves in. Is that what, is that, I mean, VE-ing ourselves is value engineering, which is, which is par- paring back and. You know, to the extent that we're already over budget, we're not over, over budget by a hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand, we're over budget by three million. Um, and so I think it just, it behooves us to really understand what we're talking about. Um, when it comes to the decisions that would need to be made, uh, in short order. Um, to keep the project going.
Lauren?
Oh, I just wanted, I'm looking for this document, which I'll email to everyone because the new trustees, newer trustees. I don't think saw it, but when we were analyzing the contingencies, our finance department analyzed the contingencies. And some other, um, interest savings and everything else and came up to. What Christie was comfortable with, which was nineteen point something percent that we had in reserves, including the construction contingency. Yep, you have it. Um, I'm not saying that solves the problem. I'm just saying it's more than just five percent. Um, also, I wanna remind everyone that the glass block is not going to go away. Whether it's gets redesigned into a different format. Um, I'm not sure. I haven't talked to, um, Land and Shelter about what they're doing. But don't forget that the one percent for the arts is all about that glass block. And that can't go away, or we just have to spend that same amount of money on another artistic endeavor. Um, so I just wanna remind people that it's not just that it's gonna turn into a plain brown paper bag.
Also to note on the aesthetics. The way I, um, understood is. If we don't meet the budget on that, that we're pro, that's what we're paying a, a person right now. To fundraise for us, right? So we have that, we, she's, that person is working on fundraising if we can't meet all the aesthetics.
And I think. For the. Well, we need the fundraising anyway.
Yeah, I think what they're saying is that there is, it, what it's looking like as the numbers come back for the budget is that. This is outside of the ad alts. So we have ad alternates that are, that we're trying to fundraise for. And then it sounds to me like as the pricing is coming back, it's coming back high. And we're also going to have to value engineer the aesthetics of the building.
That's an interesting clarification, I think. Chris, if you could answer that, what you mean by aesthetics, because as I understand it. From what you just said, it, it's really about the quality of the brick and the glass blocks. When you're talking about value engineering, that that's where the price is looking high. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And, and the other item to that is the details that we're right now, we're working with, with the subcontractors. Is based on the sections and, and the other details that the architects have drawn up. Is that the, the actual subcontractors and the, uh. Manufacturers of the block can build it the way that it's shown. So they're, they're trying to make sure that. Everything can be done the way that the architect has designed it. There may be some, some other alternatives to the design solutions. But this is what we're working through right now. And so fortunately, there is a, um. A means to the madness, if you will, to come up with a solution to, to, if we need to, and I, to be devil's advocate, you know, cut back on price. But the architect is very adamant about keeping the design as it is, and we want that as well. But there is room for us to be able to dial back if we need to.
Um, just kind of what ifs here, so that we understand our options. So what if we go forward with the partial GMP tonight? Um, I'm looking at the schedule and assuming that we got the full GMP ideally by two weeks from tonight. But at the later, maybe it'd be three weeks, we have a retreat, we could do a special meeting just to approve an item if we needed to. By the end of the month, it looks like all that would have happened is picking up the permit. Installing fencing, trailer, temporary power and this erosion control BMP business. Um, if we got back some really unexpected, throw us off course information on the second phase. Chris, like, what would our options be if we said, whoa, hold on, we signed this first phase GMP, but then the second phase came in way different from expected? Um, would we have any option to change course at that point?
Um, well, you're, we're talking about a two week push, right?
What do you mean, we're talking about a two week?
He's saying all the things that are happening in the next two weeks would be in place.
I'm saying that there's not a lot of work. I'm saying that there's not actually gonna be a bulldozer out there. As far as I can tell, by the time that we get the final GMP.
It's just fencing and.
Yeah, it's just fencing and stuff.
It's, it's mobile, it's mobilization. So I mean, it's, it's really, you know, they're, they're basing it on starting next week. If we move it out, let's say to the first part of August, then we're, we're about two weeks just. You know, I don't wanna say behind. I don't like using that word, but I think it's, it's working with the contractor to come up with the solution, how to pick up the time.
I appreciate that. It's not what I'm asking though. What I'm asking is what if we moved forward and then we decided two to four weeks from now when we saw final GMP? Oh my God, we moved forward too quick. We gotta change course now. What does that look like? What happens?
We pause.
We pause, but we signed a contract, so like, what's our?
Yeah, but our numbers are, our numbers are still locked in for the, the, the GMP that we signed on for. So they have to stay with those numbers that, that they've agreed on. Go ahead, what, what was she gonna say?
Sort of, sort of, because.
Yeah, but, but, but if you look at our AIA, uh, amendment contract, it's based on when it's signed. There's not a lock date. So once, once they're, the, it's signed, then they have to, to stay with that. We, we did not put in an actual date.
But, but there's always clauses in these contracts for GMP where if, if an owner says stop. We could get hit with general conditions for that time period where they're not working, where they're under contract. They're mobilized. They could hit us with a daily general condition fee. Generally, like if you, if we were to change the scope or pause something at our request. They would do a change order and they'd hit you with a daily general condition fee.
Okay. I'm just trying to kind of analyze our risk both ways, like, because it seems like what some of the board is concerned about. Understandably, we're all concerned. Some are more concerned about maybe than others is the what if of what if that next phase GMP comes in higher than expected?
Yeah.
And I'm trying to analyze what we would actually do in that case. Because it doesn't seem like we'd say, okay, no pool. Right? It just seems like we're further along than that. So it seems like we would proceed. And if all the work that would have happened at that moment is literally fencing and mobilization, it doesn't seem like we would even pause. It seems like we would just start working through something with alternance or taking, I don't know what we would do. But it doesn't seem like the answer would be, I wish we hadn't gotten the fencing up and the site mobilized and, you know, contractors.
That doesn't seem like we would be necessarily changing anything that would be affecting, say, the shape of the building and foundations. It would be.
Yeah.
Finishes and things like that.
And it looks like all they're doing is demo all the way through September. Right? Like nothing's being constructed. For a long time. Um, so I'm just trying to analyze like what would, what would that really look like? And would we really be too far along to, you know, it seems like we'd be. Then working on something related to the building GMP, which is the last thing to be constructed, I think. Um, and so it seems like we would still have time to work on that. I guess that's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're looking at August, you know, the, the middle part of August, if you will, for complete demolition.
Okay. Do we need further discussion? Does anybody? Does anybody want to make, you can make a motion to approve this? Or if there's no motion to approve it, then it's not approved and we wait until the, the full thing comes back or we can continue talking if we need more information. I think it's a good discussion. I mean, I think that this is exactly what we should be doing is asking a bunch of tough questions, being open to disagreeing and, and having different risk assessments and all that, so.
Well, I'll make a motion. Do I refer to it as the partial GMP? And this thing, it says early. I move to approve the partial GMP amendment as presented.
I'll second that.
So motion by Erica, second by Chris. Let's do a roll call vote, please, Jessica.
Ben Bumpock?
Yes.
Chris Hassig?
Yes.
Ross Cribs?
No.
Colin Laird?
No.
Christina Montemeyer?
Yes.
Jess Rubison? Erica Sparhawk?
Yes.
Four, three, carried.
We'll look forward to the final GMP. I think, Chris, you've heard tonight that we have concerns. And so if there's any possible way to get that to us two weeks from tonight, we'd appreciate it.
Understood, that will be my main goal. So thank you, thank you for your patience.
All right, thanks. Okay, I think that's it for the night. There's some planning commission meetings, meeting minutes and bike pet trails meeting minutes at the bottom next week. Work session, we're going to get an update from the Historic Preservation Commission as well as a update on the geothermal project that Clear is working on and an update on short-term rental kind of stats. So this is, if you know anybody who's interested in that issue from either side of the kind of views on whether we need more or less short-term rentals in town going forward, this would be a great time for them to just share those perspectives. We've committed to an annual kind of every July. We see what is our licensing, what's our enforcement, how's it going? Are we going up, are we going down? What's our revenue look like? So we're not anticipating any big changes right now. It would really be like taking the pulse, hearing from the community. And are we seeing a need to either loosen the regulations to allow for more or tighten them to allow for less or just stay the course? So no, no changes expected. I just want to always make sure because people that have those licenses and it's part of their business, they get really worried whenever we talk about it. So you can.
We did send out a letter today and we did say, we don't anticipate any decisions or any changes, but we'd like to know what you've, how you feel about it. So to short-term rental owners, property managers and other people who have shown an interest, bless you.
Okay, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, y'all. Thanks, Ross.